Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 14, 2023. And we will be going into closed session, but before we do and read those items, Madam Clerk, can you please read from last week or the last meeting we had, our closed session?
Report out of closed session from February 28, 2023. Item one pursuant to government code 54957B1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation. Title: County Council. Board action: No reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Can you please read out the two closed session items that we'll be going into?
Closed session item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Corrigan versus County of Calaveras at All, U.S. District Court Case Number 120CV00931. Item two pursuant to government code 54957A, Conference with Counsel and Security Operations Manager Regarding Matters Posing a Threat to the Security of Public Buildings, Essential Public Services, or the Public's Right to Access to Public Services or Facilities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, I'd like to call for any public comment on any of the items that we've just read or even the report out of the last closed session. I don't see anybody in the room, so do we have anybody online?
There are no online comments.
Okay, so with no public comments, we will convene to closed session. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 14, 2023. If you can, will you please stand for the pledge?
Mr. Stoffer, can you please lead us? Thank you, Chair Follendorf. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple announcements before we get started here. We will not be reporting out for closed session because we will be going after the meeting back into closed session after we've completed the regular agenda. And if you're here for item number 12 today, item number 12 has been pulled off the agenda and will appear in a future agenda. So those are announcements I have this morning. And we will go into staff announcements, next item on the agenda. And I believe Lisa Medina has a couple items that she would like to speak to us about.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable board members, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. The first is our 2023 rabies clinic vaccines and microchip clinics are now scheduled from 2019 through 2022 in partnership with Calaveras Health Services Focus has provided 2,099 free rabies vaccines and 1,091 microchips. A special thanks to our veterinary partners for donating their valuable time, including Dr. Kathy Gatlin, Dr. Steve Gatlin, Dr. Sata Granley, Dr. Mike Hayes, and Dr. Jenny Brindette. Let's keep these awesome numbers going so that every dog and cat in Calaveras' families protect them. Thank you again, friends of Calaveras Health Services Focus, for supporting us and our community in the protection of our babies against this interimal and deadly disease. The first clinic is taking place here at the Government Center on Saturday, April 8, with Dr. Jane Brindette from 9 to noon. The next three clinics will be held at the Government Center on Saturday, June 9 and Saturday, October 14. On September 9, a rabies vaccination clinic only will be held in Angel's Town. All cats must be in carriers and all pets must be on leash. Focus, our partners, are in need of volunteers to transport feral cats between our shelter and to our vineyard veterinary hospital in Lockford for our return. Morning shifts require cats to be picked up at the shelter at 7:15 a.m. and delivered to the vet at 8 a.m. Afternoon shifts require cats to be picked up at the vet between 2 and 2:30 p.m. and delivered back to our shelter. If Dr. Driver, Sergeant, and crew for insurance is required, please email Debbie@b as a boy, E-A-U-D-O-G-1-9-4-4 at gmail.com to sign up. For older residents whose drinking water loss has been affected by flood conditions, it is recommended that your well be disinfected and tested for any bacteria that could make you or your family or any of your pets sick. Our Environmental Health Department has the information to disinfect your well. This information is available online on our county website under Environmental Health. We also have that information available in our office at the front counter, so please come and see us, we have a talk there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any other staff announcements this morning?
There are none online.
And none in the room? Okay, we will move on to the next item. This is recognitions and acknowledgements. First one is a proclamation from Human Services, adopt a proclamation declaring March 2023 as Social Work Appreciation Month in Calaveras County. And I will turn it over to Supervisor Geramendi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It is so great to see all our social workers here in the audience today. Thank you guys very much for making time out of your busy days. You guys are really the linchpin for supporting many aspects of our community, and thank you so much. And I recognize a lot of faces out there who do a lot of work outside of your day jobs, helping your community too, so thank you so much. So we are here to adopt a proclamation declaring March 2023 as Social Work Appreciation Month. So bear with me. Whereas, social workers enter the profession because they have a strong desire to empower individuals, families, communities, and our nation to overcome issues that prevent them from reaching their full potential. And social workers have worked for more than a century to improve the well-being in essence and enhance the basic needs of all people. And social workers follow a code of ethics that call on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. And social workers positively touch the lives of millions of Americans each day and in a variety of places, including child welfare, adult social services agencies, schools, hospitals, the military, community centers, and federal, state, and local government. And the 2023 Social Work Month theme of "Social Work Breaks Barriers" embodies how social workers help empower individuals, families, communities, and our society to overcome hurdles that prevent them from achieving better well-being. And social workers are on the front line of the nation's opioid addiction crisis, helping people get the treatment they need and prevail over substance use disorders. And social workers have helped people cope with death and grief and helped communities recover from natural disasters, including fire and flooding. And the social worker profession is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States, with about 708,000 social workers today, and more than 60,000 more social workers expect to enter the profession over the next decade. And social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including improved community safety and social safety net programs that help ameliorate poverty, hunger, and homelessness. And social workers endeavor to work throughout our society to meet people where they are and help empower people and our society to reach the goals they wish to attain. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just really wanted to thank you for, again, accepting our proclamation. My team is here. They're a great group of social workers, very invested in Calaveras County, and they work really hard every single day to make positive changes in the community. Social work is really a field of human connection, right? We work with people and families in some of the worst, most challenging parts of their lives and really offer a helping hand to help people reach their full potential and to really break down barriers that they face, whether they be systemic, personal, even within their own families. So with that, I want to introduce Susan Gleason. She is my Adult Services Program Manager, and she's going to speak just a little bit about how social workers impact our aging population and veterans.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. I just wanted to say that I think it's really hard to, you know, get up here and summarize the work that a social worker does within just a couple minutes because the work that they do every day is challenging, but at the end of the day, it's so rewarding. I think if I could describe the work in one word, it would be service. The service that they perform, the work that they do within the community every single day is amazing, not just in adults, but child welfare. I know for adults, you know, every day we're working with our community to make our aging population safe, connect them to services, whether that's, you know, IHSS, you know, referrals to Public Guardian, referrals to our veterans. In some way, we're always doing something to connect our veterans or our social workers to some program within our agency. So I think it's, like I said, it's really hard to summarize the work that they do within such a short time, but I do want to recognize the work that they do every single day because it is vital, it's very important, and it's very rewarding. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment? Clerk?
Good morning, Madam -- oh, I said Madam Chair. Chairman members of the board, Corey Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency. It's Supervisor Follendorf, you're still sitting kind of in the middle, it's very confusing to me. I really just wanted to acknowledge and show appreciation for this incredible team of social workers that sit here in this room today. Most board meetings, they are unable to come because they're actually in court. Tuesday is their court day, and it's an incredible amount of work that this team does. And what I want to do is acknowledge the last two years of growth, resilience, and support that they've demonstrated to each other and to this community. Learning mindset is one of the most important things you can have, and this group comes at this work always ready to learn and approach this work with a new eye, a curious thinking towards ways that humans can grow and improve. So I want to look at you and tell you, I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you for the amazing work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Very well. I would like to just once again express my gratitude. My mother-in-law was a social worker, and the amount of capacity that you guys bring and depth to our community is appreciated. I admire your work greatly, and thank you. So no further ado, is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
By Supervisor Follendorf, or second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoffer. Stoffer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Now therefore be it proclaimed in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Calaveras County social workers, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of March 2023 as Social Worker Appreciation Month in Calaveras County and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Calaveras County in celebrating and support of the social worker profession. Thank you.
I'm going to give the room, I'm going to give a minute for the room to clear. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll move on to the next item, item number four. This is proclamation, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors adopt a proclamation recognizing March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Calaveras County, and I will turn this over to Supervisor Follendorf.
Good morning. So bear with me as well as I get through this. Whereas, in times of crisis, people in Calaveras County come together to care for one another. Their spirit was part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. Whereas, in 1881, Clara Barton founded the Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of the Red Cross volunteers here in Calaveras County, who continues to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. Whereas, in Calaveras County, the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like wildfires, snow events, trees into homes, donating essential bread for accidents and brain victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. Supporting service members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with face aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international aid. Whereas their work prevent and elevate human -- alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross, who live by our words, Clara Barton, you never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. We ask others to join in this commitment and to give back to our community. And at this time, I will allow for open it up to public comment. Any public comment? I see Marty. Hi, Marty.
No, 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 thrown under the bus. We're always under the bus, you know? It's okay. Marty Crane, thrilled to be a volunteer for the American Red Cross and a part of our county's emergency response teams. We are one of many partners, many of who just walked out the door. When we come together in a public emergency, you don't generally see them because they're busy, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but they're nonetheless one of our huge partners, as is OES and our fire department, Senator Sheriff Department, and of course, Animal Services. When you have an emergency and you have to immediately bring your community together in one place, they show up with all their personal health issues, emotional issues, legal issues, whatever, family issues, and they all come together in one spot. And so you have to be prepared for that. That's why our social workers are so valuable when we have a public emergency. And I just want to say that every year, thank you so much for making this proclamation every year. And every year, I take the opportunity to say, you probably have this memorized, before the sun sets tonight, it may not come up today, but, or show its face, but before the end of the day, please, please, everyone, take a paper bag, a backpack, an unused bucket, and put it in the middle of your living room floor so you won't forget it, and start putting things in there throughout the day that you realize you're going to need if you have to run out the door, such as a toothbrush, such as cash, because the ATMs might not be working, and valuable papers, snacks, a good book to read, things for your children, snacks that they're already used to. There's lists on all of our websites that show you, make it easy for you, but I suspect it's easier to just put a bucket in the middle of the room. I've done it all different ways. And if you don't have that in your way, you tend to forget about it throughout the day. But my goal today is to say thank you and to say that before the end of the day, please start, at least start your go-bag, because, and don't forget your Fresh Under Lovelies, I always mention that, because if you show up at my shelter or anybody else's shelter, we are not going to give you ours. That's enough said on that. But anyway, thank you so much. I left a message for Debbie. She may still be snowed in, or she's probably already deployed at another shelter somewhere and can't make it, but she had planned to be here. And we're, Red Cross, we are nimble and flexible, so when the call comes, we're gone. So we might plan to be here, and then we get a call and we're gone. So bless you for this. And that's all. Go-bags, don't forget. Under Lovelies, don't forget.
Thank you, Marty. Are there any other public comments?
You can stay if you like. Ms. Crane, good morning, Chair members of the board. Corey Allen, again, Health and Human Services. I must say, I have never worked with someone or duo that works as hard as the leadership at our local American Red Cross, and that is Debbie Calcoat and Adele Wiltie, and of course, key volunteer in Marty Crane, several others. The Health and Human Services Agency partners with every disaster and every weather event when we have to start evaluating the possible need for a mass care shelter. There is not for the time that Ms. Wiltie or Ms. Calcoat has not been on that telephone or on that Zoom call coordinating every detail, along with our Health and Human Services Agency staff and the Office of Emergency Services. So I've worked with them countless sessions now, and I don't know how they do it because they don't sleep. As Marty's mentioned, they're all over this region bouncing from disaster to disaster and shelter to shelter. So with that, I just want to say thank you so much for acknowledging the hard work of the Red Cross.
Are there any?
I do want to share another something. I hope I don't forget it. We can never forget our in-home caregivers because they are out there in a disaster, not taking care of just their own self, but the people that they care for. And those are very, very challenging clients because many of them are, well, they're housebound. And so partnering with public health and Health and Human Services, they, they, they just step up, and I just can't say enough for them. So never, never, never forget our in-home caregivers. And there was something else, but I forgot it. It's okay. You probably aren't. Thank you.
Are there any other in-person public comment? Has she a none? Are there any online?
There are none online.
Okay. Would that, to bring it back to the board, is there a motion?
I'll motion.
There's a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Yeah, and that'll come, that's our item.
Next item.
That's the next item.
You should have said public comment.
Yeah, on the.
Public comments for this item.
Okay. Okay, that passes 5-0. And with that, therefore be it resolved, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Calaveras County. We urge all Americans to support this organization and its noble mission. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item. This is general public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is completed before 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move on to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard. So we are open for public comment, and Kathy?
Good morning, Kathy Masafaro. I'm starting my seventh year serving as the Executive Director for the Calaveras County Arts Council. Two weeks ago, you issued a much-cherished proclamation recognizing March as Arts Education Month in Calaveras County. I don't need to tell you what the weather was like. I wasn't here because of what the weather was like, but I wanted to come in on behalf of the Arts Council and say thank you. Supporting the arts education programs in our schools is one of our signature events. In fact, it's the only one we have a fundraiser for right now. We're going to have wide We're going to have Ride and Walk for Art this Sunday, and these intrepid bikers, of which I am not one, I'm going to stay and cook chicken at the vets' hall. Some of them are going as far as 75 miles, biking all the way through Comanche and Pardee and Hogan and all of that sort of thing. And all of the money, every dime raised for Ride and Walk for Art is line itemed to support whatever arts programs we can support throughout our public schools. So I just wanted to come in and say thank you because I knew that's what public comment could be for. You don't have to have any kind of action at all, except to say, you're welcome. Thank you.
Kathy, can you come up here? We get a picture.
I'd love to. Thank you, yes.
Thank you for your dedication to art and our students in Calaveras County, Kathy.
All right, other public comments?
Good morning, Baron Jensen, Copperopolis, California. I'd like to tell you a little story that we had to deal with in Copperopolis. Sometime prior to August the 4th, a private party approached CCWD with a request to use their property behind Little John, which is adjacent to Copperopolis, where the water treatment plant is, right there along 100 homes on Arrowhead. And sometime after that, a 21-page business plan was submitted on August the 4th to the Calaveras County Planning Department, and they zoning department acted on it, saying that this property could be zoned for this type of business with a conditional use permit, but they would have to meet the requirements of that conditional use permit. The community found out about this through postings on Nextdoor. It wasn't posted properly by the zoning commission. And this is a private property. Now, for those of you that don't know what a biosolids fertilizer plant is, it's a human waste. And our water treatment plant, at the end of that, is human waste. That's what it is. It's dug out and it's carried away and it's taken somewhere else. This 21-business plan was very detailed. It said that they wanted to use this area to lay out the human waste, to air dry it, to do that, and we ended up having to have, one, the first town hall meeting, we had a, we had two, we had a meeting and CCWD decided to come, they asked if they could come to that meeting, at which point in time, they promoted this plan. And the consensus of the community, and there was, it was probably 100 people there, was that they were interested in something like this being in Copperopolis. It was met with a lot of negativity by the community, obviously, because they felt like there wasn't transparency in the beginning of all of this. Then we had a second town hall meeting, and the, in the second town hall meeting, the residents, it was a residence against biosolids, human waste fertilizer plant in Copperopolis. CCWD was there and represented in force with more than 10 employees and board members included. There was standing room only, 200 to 300 in attendance.
Please keep an eye on your time.
Okay. Yeah. And so, that being said, this created a problem for the community. They were very incensed and they didn't like it. And so, we put together a committee, and we have 1,300 signatures saying that we didn't want this. It became a point of contention. I would like to submit that to you. It has the plan and it has the signatures, wet signatures. We have an online petition also.
Your time is up.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. She'll take it.
Our phone numbers are on here too, if we want to contact us. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's John McDonald from Copperopolis, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate form, but I'm here to ask for your assistance. So a couple of years ago, I purchased a piece of property off Old Burns Ferry Road, across from the Family Dollar, if you're familiar with the area. And it was currently, when I purchased it, zoned as C2 commercial. And since I purchased the property, my priors changed with the birth of my daughter, and we're looking to sell the property. And unfortunately, when we went to sell the property, we got an offer on it, and we went to Open Escrow, discovered that due to an update to the general plan, our lot had been rezoned to residential instead of commercial. And so, we reached out to the planning department.
Can you stop right there?
Yep.
Yeah, this is not the proper form to deal with that. Your supervisor, you can get ahold of your supervisor.
Okay.
Amanda, and she can get with the planning department, and you have an opportunity to do a couple of things, but it'll be separate from here.
Yep, that's perfect. Okay. Awesome, thanks. Yes, that'd be great.
She, she.
Okay.
She will contact you and get you going in the right direction.
Okay. I also have some background information. The lot in question. Thank you, Amanda.
All right, is there any other public comments?
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You've seen me before. I'm Anne Dash, and I'm one of the people who's looking to get a new animal shelter. And I had the good fortune of reconnecting with an old friend a couple of months ago, and she's Jennifer. She's from up in Humboldt County and is also very interested in animal welfare and was so unhappy and concerned about the lack of services that she actually formed her own 501-3C nonprofit and now manages a full-time, low-cost spay neuter and wellness clinic with a full-time vet up in Humboldt County. So I was telling her about our efforts, and she wanted to come and see what we were doing. So we had a good time. We got, had a really wonderful tour of the whole facility. And she also got to help me take care of the kitties that morning because that was my regular workday there. She was very impressed by the land that has been designated so far, and, but also, it was glaring to her what our deficiencies at the shelter are, which I know you are familiar with, but they were very obvious to her. But it was, it was good because at the end of the visit and the tour and everything, she just turned to me and she said, "How does staff and volunteer do so much with so little?" She was really impressed by that. So as much as those words are heartwarming, it's like, it just doubles for me the need that we need to be working on this. And I understand that we are making progress. We have an architect, which is further than we've ever gotten before. So I wanted to say thank you for that and just to let you know that we're all still very concerned and working on this very hard. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments in the room?
Good morning, Alice Saban, Taxpayer Association. I want to say thank you to the animal shelter people. I adopted a cat, and the cat is just a sweetheart. And the amount of work in veterinary care that that cat went through was just amazing. And so, I also want to thank the board and its work to develop a plan of operation that would allow better service for the public. One of the things that could be considered and we would recommend is to take a look at our home rule principle. It hasn't been discussed lately very much, but if you would consider, for instance, when the general plan went through its last process, there was an alternative deed that was submitted by, by the Taxpayer Association, which recognizes property rights. It recognizes the economic free, free trade system and finding private ways of doing public services. One success is in Murphy's Family Park. The park was cured all by volunteers, and there's no tax money or politics involved, and it's done just, for many years, it's just been done, done great for that community. That's a good, a good model to use in approaching some of our community needs. And one of our community needs right now is emergency response to flood damage. We have Copper Cove Drive, which is now closed because of a rush went over the, over the road. However, I'm talking to the Department of Public Works, they're going through a process to try to get bids from contractors, a design to rebuild it, but in the meantime, it's closed, and it's really inconvenient for people that are, that live in Copper Cove or Poker Flat or any, not Poker Flat, but, the Copper Cove developments are. One of the things that we would recommend is have, put some money aside for emergency and have our county crews go out there and open that up and put base rock temporarily. And I want people to go through there while they're waiting for months or however long to try to get a formal bid out. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none in the room, we'll go to online. Is there any online comments?
There is no online public comments.
Okay. And we will close public comments, and we will move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member wish to remove an item from consent? I mean, none? Is there any staff member remove an item? None? Is there any member of the public wish to remove an item from consent? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move.
A motion. Motion by Supervisor Fondor, second by Supervisor Stopper. Call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes 5-0. And at this time, we will take a five-minute break before we go into item number 11 to allow the chamber to set up for their PowerPoint and allow Sarah to make an exit. All right, we are back from break, and we're going to, on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 11, this is an informational item only. This is from the administrative office to receive a presentation by the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce, and I will turn it over to Susan and Sheri.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us today. We're very excited to be here. My name is Sheri Roosh, and I am the current president for the Calaveras Chamber.
And I'm Susan Weatherby, interim CEO of the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce.
So today, we just want to give you kind of an update to let you know what your chamber has been up to. It's not showing everything. That's lovely. Go back. Yeah. Sorry.
All the way to the board.
Yeah, the technical difficulty is not showing all of the slide. That's okay. So basically, I just wanted to update you that during the pandemic, the chamber worked very hard to distribute all PPE to the businesses. We worked hard to make sure that we worked with the county as far as the paycheck protection plan, the mortgage assistance, and all of the things that were needed during the pandemic. Post-pandemic, we've been helping with the storm as much as we can for businesses, making sure that businesses have the information for FEMA, SBA, and whatever they need to make sure that they help with their costs of damage. Go ahead. Good thing I memorized this.
I know.
Oh, look at Martin. Thank you so much, Martin. Ah, yay, thank you so much. It's a pain when you don't have what you wrote. So working with our county, obviously, the FEMA, we had, we had attended the first day and just kind of popped in to make sure there weren't any businesses that had any, needed any assistance from us. Next slide. Your Calaveras Chamber for the past two years has sponsored a Choose Calaveras campaign. You'll see these little stickers all over the place, which is wonderful. When they become a member or renew their membership, they get these Choose Calaveras County stickers. And we have done everything we can to make sure that we keep our tax dollars local because it helps to grow our businesses and helps build our economy. You can see that we did, for Valentine's Day, we, we put out all the dinners. During the holidays, we did shop local, so really trying to keep those, those dollars in our county. This is our Mug Shop Monday that we do with our local businesses for social media, and you can see you don't have to be a human to be on Mug Shop Monday, but we just, this is just to support our local businesses. So our events, name change. So we had March 26 of 2022, our installation dinner, which was held at the Met. We were a packed house. It was wonderful. We get to choose our favorite employees, small business, large business, nonprofit, Entrepreneur of the Year. It was a great time to be had by all. Ribbon cuttings, we do a lot of these for our businesses. We do, if they have an anniversary, if they're opening, if they just want to drum up some, some business, just to bring, bring the community into their place of work. On the right track, we love this, this motley crew, I love this picture. We go to both Calaveras High School and Bret Hart High School, and we teach students about, it's like the game of life, how, how to do all the things that they need to do as seniors. Next slide. So we have all kinds of businesses that come and help. We have our, we teach the students how to register to vote, very important, how to find a job, how to pay their bills, how to write a check, simple things that they don't necessarily know. So we do everything we can to equip them. So our Leadership Calaveras is a great program that we do. We take a group of adults and we spend 10 months with them, teaching them about the county, teaching them what kinds of things impact our county, and it's, it's an amazing program that we have. This last year, we had our very first Rural Chamber Summit. This was exciting and wonderful. We invited all the chambers throughout the state of California that were small and rural to come to Calaveras. We appreciated the Board of Supervisors coming in and saying hi to everyone. We are very excited that we will have our next Rural Chamber Summit, October 5th and 6th, again at Ironstone, and we are starting those invitations already. We do have SBDC, who has been a huge sponsor for this. We were blessed to have Tara Gray-Lynn from Go Biz. We were blessed to have Tara Gray-Lynn from Go Biz, which is also one of our partners, and Heather Luzey from SBA. So this is a great event for us and they don't do any kind of Rural Chamber Summits anywhere. They have the huge one that they do in February with the Western Calaveras Chambers, however, that's for larger chambers. So this is nice to have for the smaller chambers. Our State of the County, which most of you attend, is a wonderful event to kind of give all of our people who attend kind of the state of where we are and what's to come in Calaveras County. We appreciate Data Jorgensen, our senator, and our Congress aides that also come to the event and kind of give a state of the county. Our Calaverasopoly. Yay! It's finally here. So this was a long time coming for us, a lot of work. And so businesses who chose to purchase a square are on the board. We have an older map of Calaveras in the center and for the Orc Heart and the Fool's Gold, if you know how to play Monopoly, they have history of Calaveras. So we tried very hard. If you have not purchased your game, you could do so at the chamber, but they are, it's a wonderful, it's good for our businesses and good for our county.
And fun to play right now when it's raining, right?
Yeah, good idea. We do support our local business associations. We've been working hard with Angels Camp Association and with Valley Springs Association and I know that we have other associations that are just kind of starting to get themselves off the ground and we do everything that we can to support them and their ribbon cuttings and things that they do for businesses. We had our first back in person, finally, our Good Morning Calaveras and we had our guest speaker, CAO Craig Pedro. Thank you, Craig, again for coming. And our CEO Doug Archer. And it was a very well-attended packed house and we're looking forward to the next one. Dignity Health actually sponsored this and paid for the food and so forth, so we thank them and please stay tuned for the next one coming up. So our CBRC, which is our Calaveras Business Resource, we're so, so excited to have our new partners inside that building, is buzzing and busy. We have to figure out the doorbell situation because it rings and all the entities go to the door to figure out who's there. So we're working on that. But we have the Calaveras Mariposa Action Agency, CMCAA, that is there, the Housing for HHSA is there, Motherlode Job Training, we're doing some more classes with SBDC and of course, the chamber is there. And we're working really hard to become a one-stop-shop for employers and employees. And so, super excited about our building. We have done some changes with the chamber. We kind of have a new look. This was a process in the making to, this is our brochure and we've caught up with the, you know, the 21st century in that we have our, through COVID, we all did the QR code. So now we have a QR code on there. You can actually scan that with your phone and join the chamber immediately. So we're very excited about that. And working with the Visitors Bureau, it's been a wonderful partnership, very excited to be working with them. Your Calaveras Chamber is working hard to become a one-stop-shop. Our partners with our Visitor Bureau has helped keep dollars local with tourists. We witnessed during our Rural Summit, several chambers working with our Visitors Bureau, the Visitors Center would bring in the tourists into the county and the chamber would work with the tourists by providing a list of businesses arranged by area for them to visit. The chambers also provided discount for foods, wine, activities, et cetera, and this would create a great partnership. With our county partners at the Calaveras Business Resource and the ongoing collaboration with our economic developer and their Visitors Bureau, we would like to ask the board to consider giving the Calaveras Chamber a small portion of the TOT to help us continue with this endeavor. We are asking for $50,000 and I know you cannot make a decision, I'm just putting it out there. This is to help our businesses thrive, build our chamber, keep dollars local, and creates a wonderful experience for our tourists. Next. That's all you have?
So.
One more.
There we go.
All right, our upcoming events, so we have our nominations actually are closed for our Best of Calaveras. We just selected those and we're super excited for that to come out. And we invite you to our annual dinner, which will be on April 1st. If you haven't gotten your tickets, you still have time. We will have cocktail hour at 5:00, followed by dinner, live music, silent auction, and a casino night. We will be out at the fairgrounds, we will be eating ribs, so make sure you wear your attire for that. And we're super excited about this event. And we thank you so much for your time and for allowing us to give an update and if there's any questions that you have for us, we'll do our best to answer them.
Any board questions? Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And not so much a question, but a statement. I want to thank you both for all that you do for our community and both of you are intimately involved in volunteer activities throughout the community. I think Sheri told me the other day, 19 years on the school board. That's quite a commitment. Thank you.
It is.
And more than that.
Thank you.
But I just, I think that, you know, and full disclosure, I'm a dues-paying member of the Chamber of Commerce and used to serve on the board. But I think that, you know, one of the things that you guys offer that I think the county ought to consider supporting is really, you know, we have a lot of entrepreneurs in our community and we've got a lot of tourists coming in, so there's opportunity, but a lot of our people don't have a lot of business experience. And so you guys providing those workshops and points of contact and mentoring, I found to be a very important tool. It's one thing to have the spirit and maybe find the capital, but there's just some things you don't know when you start a business that another business can tell you, you know, how to do the little things like buy insurance or payroll or, you know, do you have access correctly? So I really, I really value that and I think that, I would hope that when we get to budget, we consider your request because I think that that's an add-on to what we need to accomplish to be business-friendly in this community is the service that you guys provide. So when we get there, I don't know what amount or how this board will go, but I would like us to consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions? We'll open to the public. Any public comments or questions?
My name is Christopher Budner. I am a full-time Murphy's resident and entrepreneurial business owner, co-owner of Murphy's Witchwalk LLC, and I'll be reading from a prepared statement. I addressed this board during general public comment on February 14th about my experiences with intentional suppression of my entrepreneurial business ventures. Today's agenda item 11, receive a presentation by the Calaveras County of Commerce appears to be a pretext for a $50,000 gift from this county's TOT funds. I voiced my staunchest opposition to the outlandish proposal by the Calaveras Chamber and endorsed by the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. On March 8th, the Chamber, complicit with the CVB and Murphy's Business Association, jointly received a formal cease and desist letter from me, copied to my legal counsel addressing their collective misappropriation of the trademark-protected Murphy's Witchwalk promotional compound slogan in a late scramble to promote this weekend's Murphy's Irish Day. The trio's infringement of my intellectual property demonstrates a collective void of marketing sophistication and legal savvy. Thus far, only the Chamber and the CVB have wisely acceded to my legal demand to immediately cease and desist deleting their trademark-infringing material from their respective online marketing assets to remediate their trespass upon my federally protected legacy trademark. The Chamber's Leadership Calaveras program purports to encourage development of responsible business community leadership, so I ask, what example does trademark infringement teach the business community about leadership? What is the Chamber's justification for holding out a tin cup for taxpayer-funded welfare? What accountability would the Chamber have for receiving this government largess? Let the Chamber propose a business plan demonstrating how they'll deliver an acceptable ROI on a low-interest $50,000 SBA loan. The former interim Chamber CEO, who is now the current taxpayer-salaried CVB Executive Director and Junior Supervisor, must recuse himself from voting. The Chamber's request for a $50,000 gift must be unanimously denied. Supervisors, let this serve as a pragmatic demonstration of entrepreneurial Calaveras leadership. Junior Supervisor, you and your Business Bureau cohorts must rise to my level, I will no longer go down to yours. And Supervisor Garamendi, I share your pain. This is how to sink a fence post. To be continued. Thank you all.
Is there any other public comments?
House of Labor, Taxpayer Association. I've been a Chamber member for a long time and I really appreciate that group and the firm people. Very seldom do they make mistakes. Looks like an exception has occurred. No way should tax money go to a private organization. And especially gas tax. Once you pass a tax, it's very, and you find out that the money's really not doing that good, it's really hard to undo something like that. So, you know, in 1997, I was on the first leadership program, which was wonderful, and inspired me to start a taxpayer association. So as a direct response to their influence, you've got a County Taxpayer Association. It's unfortunate that the taxpayer association doesn't advocate taxing using the gas tax to fund the chamber. Sorry, thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Seeing none in the room? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay. Is there any other board comments? Supervisor Faldor.
Thank you for your presentation. I have one question. Where are all the locations you can buy the Calaverasopoly?
Yes, you can get them at Olive Crush in Valley Springs, Rusty Bucket in Copper Cove, the Visitors Bureau, and Angels Camp in Murphy's, and then Moke Hill Nets in McCallum Hill. And you can also come by the Chamber offices, but also, as we're around and about, we can certainly drop off anywhere. If you just let us know, email us at chamber@calaveras.org and we can drop them off for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I want to thank you guys for your presentation. It was a very good presentation and thank you for bringing us an update on things going on with the chamber. And I plan to be there April 1st. The VSAPA will be there. I know we couldn't get a table, we were trying to get a table, but we're going to show up early and get a table.
Oh, perfect.
Awesome.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll take a five-minute break for them to break down before we move on. The next item on the agenda, we have pulled item 12, so we move on to item 13. This is an informational item from Human Resources. This is to receive an update from the staff on the status of internship programs within the county service. Judy Hawkins.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. So I am very happy to be here today to give you an update on our internship program and we have some exciting information to share with you. So of course, everybody knows now we're in a time of a severe labor shortage. It's even more important to ensure that we have a program that promotes student awareness about the diversity of county careers. Our goal for this program is to enhance the education and training of the local student population while strengthening overall recruitment by supporting pathways to employment. And the pathways is kind of our big focus moving forward. And so just a little background, when I had CJ Singh in my office, we had worked, and this was August of 2017, we worked to formalize a high school internship program. We worked closely with Scott Nannick, CCOE, and then both of the high schools. And at that time, I believe we had five interns. And unfortunately, after we did have a successful year in 1819, then everything kind of got stopped by COVID. And so then we've had to put the program on hold. And then also departments have had to recover, getting people back in the office, all of that. And so now is the perfect time to start taking up the program again and moving forward. We have been working on it for a while now. We have, Nick Marvin's been working closely with CCOE and the different high schools. So I am going to, I do want to make sure I thank CJ for his work on this program initially. And at the time, he was the model. He had graduated a local high school, went on to a junior college, university, and then returned to our county. Although he's not working for us anymore, he is still, has his dream job within Calaveras County. And so he's also a willing partner to go and talk to the high schools. So at this time, so that we can go over our high school program, when we start up the program, we work with the county departments to see which departments can take in an intern. Because although we would love to have interns in all departments, they have to have the staff available to work with the interns, to allow the interns to shadow them, all of that. And so we do have to have the department participation. And then the next step is the school outreach, which is what we have been doing now. And so each of the interns, when we identify who wants to be in the program, they go through an actual hiring process. And so they fill out applications and they go through interviews. So since Nick has been working with the schools, I'm going to let him take over and talk about where he's at.
Good morning, Board Chair, members of the board. Nick Marvin from, what's that?
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I'll give you an update of where we are currently with the high school intern program. Currently, we have 16 programs within our departments that are eager to bring in an intern. I have met with students and staff at Calaveras High School several times now and have been able to get quite a bit of interest from the students there and a lot of support from the faculty as well. I am currently setting up meetings with Bret Hart and excited to get them started and then I will be focusing on Mountain Oaks School as well. Currently, we have eight applicants from Calaveras High School alone, which is more than the five that we had from the previous time. And we also have four more interested and we are expecting applications from them soon. The applications so far are with the departments for initial review and we are now ready to actually move forward with interviews. We hope to get those started, scheduled either later today or tomorrow. We will be reaching out to the departments and the students to get them in. And it's important to note that this will not just be the students coming in, sitting in rooms, scanning documents, running for coffee or anything like that. Our plan is to get them, this will be an opportunity to enhance the programs within the departments and give these students a chance to shadow and learn as much as they can about the different services that we offer. This will be key to our organizational succession planning as outlined in our strategic plan. We want to show the students exactly what a career in these fields involve and help guide them in exploring careers that they may not have been interested in before, but we are getting them interested as well. Perfect example is actually Jesse Fowler from the Ag Department. Our Ag Commissioner went with me to Calaveras High on March 1st. She met with a couple of students and actually was able to shift one of the students into applying for the Ag Department that had no interest in it before. We are hopeful that within the next school year, we will have this process running very smoothly and we hope to create kind of a mock job fair with the students where they'll be able to come, meet the departments, apply for the internship, and interview within the same day so that we can get them started immediately going into the next school year. This will open the door for the students into Calaveras and we're hoping that they'll start as interns and then they'll be here for the next 30 or 40 years and retiring from here in no time, maybe taking all of our spots here. So with that, I would like to introduce Odile Morrison from the Calaveras High School CTE Program, who's been a huge help, her and Pamela Richmond over there. So with no further ado, Odile. So, with no further ado, Odile.
Good morning, Board members. As Nick says, I am strong workforce coordinator at Calaveras High School, where my children attended. And we're very excited to be, to see this program start up again. We have been working closely with Nick to facilitate that. And actually, it's very timely because at Calaveras High School, we have always had a strong focus on work experience, but we've really focused on that in the last couple of years. And we have a freshman entry semester one class where students do some career exploration, planning their lives, that kind of thing. And we'll revisit that. And every student at Calaveras, every incoming student at Calaveras High School does that program. And then, as you know, we have a very robust Career Tech Education Department with four strong pathways in the Ag and Natural Resources, Medical, Public Service, Auto, and Engineering. And again, we're really working closely with local industry and now the county on providing work experience specifically to juniors and seniors in those pathways. And those, obviously, the Calaveras County and other internships are open to all students. They don't have to be in the Career Tech Education pathway. So, we're super excited about this development, and we'd really like to thank the staffing HR for making, reviving this project and making it possible again. And we're just looking forward to seeing how it develops. We have lots of plans, lots of schemes, and we'll revisit those in the next presentation, I think. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about Calaveras High involvement?
Any questions? Supervisor Thomas.
Just curious, with the work program with the high scores, what age are they able to enter at? 14 or 16?
It depends on various, it depends on the business. Some businesses require them to be 18, which is problematic. With the county, it's 16, I think. We decided on 16. And in other local businesses, also 16. And the way it works in terms of, yeah, that's.
16.
16, yeah. Long-winded way of saying 16.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Odile, so good to see you. I mean, we started working together when our kids were in elementary school in the gardens. So, it's been a long time. I'm very supportive of this program. I think it's super important. When we first started talking about this, I remember a student from Calaveras High School who wanted to go study environmental sciences and was telling me she had to get out of the county and go work all these other places. And I asked her if she knew anything about environmental management, EMS agency over there and the things we do there, and they had no idea. So, I think it would be great, as we build this, to really send as many of our managers or key employees that can articulate what they do into the schools. You might find kids that are interested in Health and Human Services. We had social workers this morning in Career Tech, you know, over in the programs I've got there, getting our Roads Department over there and talking. Scotty's kind of got a quick line to a lot of those kids coaching. But really, try to find a way to show these kids the wide breadth of opportunity that exists right here in the county. We're the largest employer in our county. We have a lot to offer. And I really hope our managers and our employees, if they have the opportunity, take the time to go over and talk to those classes, because you never know where your future employee might be sitting in that room, and showing them the opportunities right here at home. So, you know, there's a lot of jobs here that don't require advanced degrees. And this could be a way for them to begin working with us and pursue their opportunities to education and growth. So, the more we can catch the better. So, thank you very much for doing this program.
So, I do also want to let the board know that we, right now, we did want to give you an update. We still are finishing putting the program together. We will bring you back another more formal presentation with pictures. The students that we have pictures of from several years ago are gone, and I couldn't get their approval to release them, except for Basit Singh works for us. So, but we are excited to bring more information to you, and we will be giving you regular updates. And besides high school, we also will be focusing on our college interns. We have several interns within our Social Services, Behavioral Health, and Public Health. And so, we also want to grow those opportunities. But thank you very much. Is there any other questions I can answer?
Is there any public comments on this presentation? No public comments in the room? Is there any online?
There are no online.
Okay, well, thank you, Judy, and for your presentation. We look forward to the next one, the update with pictures and how many interns we have here and, yeah, the presentation at the school.
Yes, and we're hoping that it gets bigger and better every year.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good thing. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number 14. This is an action item. It's a resolution from Human Resources. Adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list for fiscal year 2022, 2023, mid-year budget changes, and approve the new job descriptions. Judy Hawkins, we just saw you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good to see you again. So, we are bringing back, in tandem with the meeting we had on February 28th for the mid-year budget changes, we are bringing back the position control list changes as well as the corresponding job descriptions. We have, we also have the job description, which is for a extra higher position only, which is equipment operator, which was not part of the presentation on the 28th.
Is there any board questions? Comments? Seeing none? Is there any public comments or questions on this item? Seeing none? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
No public comments in the room or online, so I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
And we will move on to item number 15. It's a resolution from OES. It's adopted resolution ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation of a local state of emergency for the winter storm damages and extreme weather events beginning on and around February 23rd, 2023. And this is John Osborne. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Members. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services. On March 10th, I declared a local disaster regarding the latest set of storms that we have been facing. The incident period started on or about February 23rd, 25th is more likely. I do need to correct, in the one, two, in the third paragraph, I mentioned December 31st, which was actually the other set of storms that we declared. So, in the proclamation of local emergency, I requested all state and federal resources like we normally do. And on the 12th of March, Governor Newsom included us in our state of, in his state of emergency, so we've been named by the state. I'm also aware that Governor Newsom requested the, not the full major disaster declaration, but the step below that, that allows for direct federal assistance to the state, which is the kind of the precursor to go back to the major declaration. So, does anybody have any questions about the proclamation? And then, if so, I'd love to answer them, and then I can roll into a quick update if you'd like.
Any question by the board? No? Any question from public?
Yeah.
Mr. Schalia.
There's no online public comment either.
Is somebody online?
No.
There's nobody online? I think Al has a.
This is public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for your good work. We have a simple problem that's become complex. In the closing of Copper Cove Drive because of storm damage, it looks like, if you don't look at it, it looks like a very, four hours of work can open that up with a gravel road substituting part of the asphalt. However, the county is not interested in doing that. But maybe Emergency Services could send some value to open that up. It could open in four hours. That's my comment.
Thank you, Al. Any, no public comment online? That was the only public in the room, so we will bring it back to the board. Any other questions, John? I see the correct date is in the resolution. It was just on the forward part of it that wasn't, so we're good for the proclamation. Any motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Guaramendi, second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, John.
Yes, would you guys like an update? Okay. So, the weather pattern has changed slightly. The amounts of rain have come down just a smidge, but we'll take it. And the brunt of the latest set of storms is today and tonight. If we can, if we can make it through December, if we can, if we can make it through till tomorrow, there's a couple-day break before the next set of storms, which are, been characterized as weak over the weekend. We actually have a lot of resources out and about. We currently have a preposition of six fire engines, local fire engines, that are task forced specifically to flood or extreme weather response. We've had that up for a couple days. As a part of that preposition, we actually, for the first time since I've been with the county, had included in that an overhead team. The advantage of that is we currently have, oh, six folks from across the state into our EOC that are acting in our chief positions such as logistics, liaison, PIO, and things like that. We've really spent the last 24 hours ramping those folks up and getting us into a mode where we can operate with that added resource. In addition to that, I talked about that. I talked about the weather. We have all of our regular county folks, not regular because they're all great, but our regular players at the ready. We've been meeting with Health and Human Services. So, we have the wraparound service, the sheltering, the temporary evacuation points. We have that preplanned. We've been spending time with the Sheriff's Office in preplanning evacuation warnings for the areas where, that are likely to flood should we take a bunch of rain. So, we're positioned well for tonight, tomorrow, but looking forward to the sunshine on Thursday. And hopefully, the weather holds true for over the weekend, and then this little bit weaker storm, maybe just a regular snow, or wet rainstorm for once. Any questions?
I have a question. Can you walk through the process of, mostly for constituents? Because I think they don't realize you guys are still out there working and trying to keep everyone safe. High water, not much you guys can get into without putting yourselves at risk. What the process is, once the storm settles, of addressing damages around the county?
Yes, ma'am. So, depending on the type of aid that the governor and/or the president decides is appropriate for this particular disaster, it's been very difficult to separate the last one from this one, because literally, the last one ended and we started a new one. So, in the last one, we were awarded both public assistance and individual assistance. The individual assistance is for folks that suffered damage to their residents, their homes, and things of those nature. That's the, I'll call it IA or individual assistance. The public assistance side is for damages to our infrastructure, such as Copper Cove Road. The issue with Copper Cove Road and actually several other of the roads is, it's not as simple as four hours going out and taking a dump truck and dumping gravel out there. Those roadways and the soil underneath them are engineered, and the culverts that run underneath them are also engineered. And so, to assume without an engineering report about the status of that soil and then the infrastructure underneath that roadway, and opening that roadway with just gravel over the top of it and not knowing the damages underneath it presents a serious potential hazard. We have taken mitigation steps to not make that damage any worse in some areas through tarping and sandbagging and closing of the roads. But we really do that for the public safety. Until we know what that road really looks like underneath it, it's just not as simple as the asphalt over the top of it. But that public assistance is what allows us to come in with the engineer and the public works team, get an assessment, get a plan together, and then submit that as a project to repair that roadway. Does that, does that cover what?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments or questions? Martin?
I'd just like to ask, my understanding of this is going to be a warm rain that's coming in. Do you know what the elevation is that we will see snow?
So, today, tonight, snow levels between 5,500 and 7,000 feet, been right there in the middle. This morning, rising to 7,000 to 8,500 feet this afternoon, then lowering back down to 3,000 to 5,000. So, it's really going to climb up the hill and put a lot of water into the snow that's there, and then it's going to come right back down and put more snow on top of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question. And Judy and I talked about this a couple days ago. So, we see where all the damages are done on the lower plains during this. What happened, and you may not have the answer, but in the higher elevation, we're not going to see those damages until well after the snow is gone and melted. So, do these proclamations that the county has been doing also cover, once the snow is gone and we can actually see what is going on in the higher elevation? Or how did that work?
So, it gets a little tricky because we've been one right after the other. The way that the state and the federal government work is there's an incident period for this set of storms. So, if there was damage in this storm, you work through the available resources for that one. If there's damage in this storm, you have to be able to discern when the damage took place, which gets difficult when there's 186 feet of snow, right? But what we're seeing is kind of a multifaceted disaster across the entire county. So, it seems that the hot topic is the flooding in the lower areas. The problem is, in the foothill areas, all that water is coming through the foothills before it floods the lowlands, and that's where we're getting slide outs and damaged roads and culverts and things like that. We also had a snow mix in there. So, structures that maybe weren't accustomed or built to be having as much snow as we've had, we rained on top of that snow, which makes it about five times heavier. So, we're starting to see some damages, you know, leaking roofs, buckling, those types of things. And then, in the high country, not only are we fighting literally historic snow levels as far as like our folks out plowing 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but the snow load on top of the residents and structures up in the high country are now really, really saturated with water. We've had enough snow that if it slid off the roof, the pile that's on the ground is now supporting the snow on the roof and won't let it get off. And so, it's difficult. What we are seeing over the last couple of days is we're starting to see the internal signs in the buildings, you know, the leaking, the drywall buckling, and those signs of stress that there's damage to that building. And once we see that, we are making, making a path to get someone out to inspect that. So, we know at least there's damage there, and we're reporting that damage. And then, hopefully, sometime around May, when all this melts, we'll be able to get in and get an accurate assessment of the damages.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John, it seems like you've got a, you've been on the disaster alert since the new year. So, you're in your third month of disaster. I hope you and your team are hanging in there. You always seem to have a good attitude. But I can imagine the burden is great with all your cooperators and everybody who's been going around the clock. So, I guess my. So I guess mine is less a question, expression of gratitude.
Thank you.
Hang in there.
Thank you. You bet.
I thought maybe I'd get a phone call about Cosgrove Creek when I, this morning when I drove over about seven AM, it was rising. But so far, over the course of these storms, we've been, it's.
We have had, we had have eyes, we have had eyes on Cosgrove Creek, not quite hourly. And kind of the founder of, of the Cosgrove Creek is the two bridges right there on, on, on Hogan, New, Hogan Dam Road. We've intentionally gone out and laid eyes on that. We know that when it starts going around those culverts and the bridge abutments, that's when the fun starts. And we've been intentionally eyeing that multiple times each and every day. We have had actually great partnerships from our cooperators like CCWD, like the American Red Cross, our county departments. Public Works has been going nonstop for, I think, four weeks. Twelve on, twelve off, first and ten, do it all over again kind of stuff. And they've just been plowing and plowing and plowing, and they've really been fighting to just keep the emergency single lane. Remember that when they plow, they plow one lane so that we can get equipment into the people that need it and get ambulances out, and then we try to widen that. And they've been working very, very hard to do that, and it seems like just about the time we get to about a lane and a half, we take more snow. So those, those guys that are out doing that in the middle of the night have been working extremely hard, and OES is, is grateful for the, for the team that, that we have within this county. So, thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any public comments or anything on that? Update? No? Okay, we'll bring it back. We'll go on to the next item, which is supervisors announcements. In compliance with Government Code five-three-two-three-two dot three D, board members shall provide brief reports in any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I'll just report on the RCRC meeting last week. Obviously, a couple hundred pages of information, but of note, we continue to move forward with the Golden State Connect Authority. RCRC came up with two million dollars to start this internet project a year and a couple months ago. Now we're at twenty million dollars of activity. If we keep going on the path we currently, we could be at two hundred million by this time next year. So this is happening, Calaveras County, thanks to Stan and Kathy, have been wonderful participants in this. We have our data back, and we are beginning to fine tune that data so that we could begin making decisions on behalf of Golden State Connect and Calaveras, how we will deploy and build a new municipal-based broadband for Calaveras County in the future. So it's, it's big, it's moving quick. I think we wake up every day and see it double in size, and we're now forty California counties, forty out of fifty-eight are members of this. So hopefully, we'll have some good news to present to Calaveras County and those who do not have internet, that it is coming.
Yeah, good job. Thank you for that report. Supervisor Follendorf.
Our local Butthurt Girls Basketball Team won the state champion for Division Five, so big, big congratulations to them, those girls. Really worked hard to get where they're at, and it's a really, for most of them being in their senior year, a good clue out. So congratulations to Butthurt.
Congrats to Brett Hart. Yes, we look forward to a proclamation. Supervisor Stopper.
Nothing to report, Chair Tom Milli.
Nothing to report, okay? And I have nothing to report either, other than, good job Brett Hart, Girls Basketball Team.
Sure.
And with that, we are going to adjourn, and we're going to go back into closed session. So thank you very much. Have a great rest of the week.